Called the meeting to order, we're going to start out with a flag salute led by Troop 30. They're going to come down and lead us in the flag salute. So gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is convened in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of New Jersey. Let the official minutes reflect that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by publishing a notice in the Asbury Park Press on Friday, January 8, 2011, and forwarded to the Ocean County Gazette and Tom's River Times on Monday, January 10, 2011, and thereafter posting same on the Town Hall bulletin board for such notices and filing same with the township clerk pursuant to a resolution adopted by the Township Council on January 5, 2011. Notice was also posted on the Township webpage. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilman Mann 40.
Here.
Council Maruka.
Present.
Councilman McGuckin.
Present.
Councilman Sevastakis.
Here.
Councilman Whitman.
Here.
Council Vice President Kabiel.
Present.
Council President Hill.
Here.
The first item of business is the approval of minutes, a regular meeting, November 15, 2011.
Move the minutes into the record.
Second.
The minutes are moved by Vice President of Council Kabiel, second by Councilwoman Maruka. Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman Mann 40.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Councilman Sevastakis.
Abstain, I was not present at the meeting.
Councilman Whitman.
Abstain, I wasn't present at the meeting either.
And Council President Hill.
Yes.
Next on the agenda are two honoring resolutions and presentations, the Tom's River Lightning 12 View Fast Pitch Softball and the Red Ribbon Drug Awareness Week.
Move the resolutions.
Second.
The resolutions are moved by Council Vice President Kabiel, second by Councilman Sevastakis. Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Councilman Sevastakis.
Yes.
Councilman Mann 40.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
And Council President Hill.
Yes. The mayor, we can't meet the mayor down here. Present the proclamations.
My folder. Brian, bring up my folder. I'm going to ask you. My folder, yes, Brian, bring it up. Brian, yes. Hold it. Good.
All right, this is the girls' fast pitch softball team. Okay. And what's your name is?
Tammy.
Tammy is going to just explain to us what the occasion is, what they're here for, and then we have certificates for every one of the players, okay? So Tammy, I'll let you take it from there.
Okay. Good evening. This team of 11 players has come together in a short period of time and have developed into a solid 12 and under team on and off the field. With only a few practices together, we were able to make, take home two second place awards in two fall tournaments. This is a great accomplishment for them as a newly formed team. Having practices all through the winter into spring, this team will only become more unified, which should ensure a fun and competitive season. As coaches, it is truly icing on the cake that not only do the girls play softball well on and off the field, but they have united quickly as friends. The coaches thoroughly enjoy coaching all these girls and look forward to the next seasons of tournaments. These girls are looking forward to the inaugural season of the newest Tom's River Township Park and playing on the newly constructed fields on Bay Ave and Tom's River, a complex design with the players and all kids in mind. So thank you very much.
Tammy, thank you. Congratulations to all of you. All of us on the governing body are anxious to see that open. I go up there almost every day to see it. It's really coming along. It's in the final phase and I'm sure it's going to be ready to open in April. And somebody had already told me they'd like me to throw out the first pitch, but that's where you wind it up and throw it underhand. Could you guys help me because I never did that before? If I come and get some lessons from you, all right? Listen, we have certificates for each one of you. Do you want to help me call out these names? We will present them to everybody. You probably know.
Kira Abnow.
All right.
Alisa Arango.
There you go.
Katie Clancy.
There you go.
Nicole Coco. Meren Connolly. Alexandra.
Jean Collet.
Jean Collet.
Alexa Haley. And she's going to take it from our twin sister, Julia Haley. Shelby Howell. Brooke. Lillian.
Isaac and Lillian.
And Lillian Teller.
All right. Did we forget anybody?
No.
If so, we'll make sure. Now, we want to just present to you as the coach a proclamation from the governing body that you can put in your headquarters or in the dugout when you get one, all right? I want to make a challenge to all of you ladies. You know, the boys' little league have won a world championship, all right? So we expect great things. We spent a lot of money to make that field up there. So we're expecting great things from you, all right? Is that, can I get a promise from you? Okay. And Tammy, let me present this to you. It's a proclamation signed by everybody on the governing body, just thanking you, recognizing you for what you've done for all these girls, all right? Okay. Listen, I want to just get a quick. Pardon my left hand. Okay. Okay, ladies, good luck to you. Nice, thanks for coming down.
Thank you. Thank you for the field.
Yes.
We have a picture over here from one of our tournaments that we would like to present to you.
Oh, all right.
On behalf of the girls.
That's it. Oh, we've got a spot on the wall for that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We will, I'll tell you what, Tammy. All right, there's another project we want to recognize tonight, and that is Red Ribbon Week. It's a drug enforcement program to create awareness for the drugs and get a commitment from the children that they will stay drug free for the rest of their lives. We all know drugs are a curse on our society and they're responsible for all of the crimes in our country, about 80% of all the crimes. And anything that we can do to stop that is serious. And our police department and two of our officers, Sergeant Sean O'Keefe and Officer Ted Maloney, have been working with the troops from Troop 30. Where is the? There he is. Ted, why don't you come on up? Ted, I'm going to ask you, our police officer Ted Maloney, Ted, why don't you just explain to folks what the program is about and I will bring the troops on.
Basically, myself and my boss are currently assigned to the special enforcement team in the Tom's River Police Department. Primarily, we work with narcotics, which our mayor here just pointed out is probably the biggest plague we have on society today. If you're not aware, just about every type of crime we have, every fraud, every theft, every burglary, every home invasion that we deal with in this town is all drug related. The idea of Red Ribbon Week, excuse me, is to educate the troops about how dangerous these drugs are. And in return, what we're hoping is that they spread the word and educate their peers. We had a great group come in about a few weeks ago. We told them all about what's going on. We gave them a tour of the police department. I shared some fun stories with them, but primarily, we showed them exactly what's going on in life and how bad things can become. And I shared a lot of personal stories that I've seen and as did my boss. And, you know, and I know they benefited from it and I'm sure their peers will as well.
Thank you. I'm going to ask all of you scouts from Troop 30 to come on up here, please. These are the fellows that just let us in the pledge of allegiance. Just to second what Ted has just said, you know, when I was the Ocean County prosecutor, we used to screen about 5,000 cases a year here in Ocean County. And we used to say, guys, just about 80% of those would be drug related, either as he said, thefts, sale, distribution, or the spinoff crimes to get the money to pay for the drugs. So I get half of you on the other side, but that's it. That's it. Okay. Okay, that's good. The other half. So you scouts, you scouts, listen to this program and you understand the seriousness of it and you're impressed by what these officers had to say? You know, you guys can be influential in passing this word on to your friends and associates too and be like the pebble that gets dropped in a pond and has, keep expanding out because this is a problem that just the police can't solve by themselves. They need the help of everybody to fight this program. We have two proclamations here, one for each of our two officers to recognize and express our appreciation for what they've done with these troops. So Ted, we have a proclamation for you, signed by me as the mayor and by Council President Mo Hill, thanking you. And we have one for the sergeant, which I'm sure you'll be able to give to him when you see him. And we have one, is there a scoutmaster here with, scoutmaster, why don't you come on up and present this to you? The history of this Red Ribbon Week commemorates the death of a drug enforcement, federal drug enforcement agent who was killed by drug traffickers, tortured, beaten, and then murdered. And this started out as a commemoration of him and having this as an annual thing keeps this program alive. So we'd like to present that to you and thank you for helping with the cooperation with your troops and keep up the good work, all right? Okay, thank you. All right, guys, that's it. That's all you get. Thank you.
Are we on TV now?
Yes.
White shirts on show up on TV?
No.
Yeah, so you have the blue shirt, you can't have a white shirt.
Pretty much a water.
Do you see it yet?
Yeah, I checked it out. Item seven on the agenda.
Item seven, an ordinance. An ordinance repealing subsection C of section 175-10 of chapter 175, bathing beaches, swim clubs, and swimming pools municipal of the Code of the Township of Tom's River, Ocean County, New Jersey, and establishing a new subsection C of section 175-10 of the Township Code. This is the final public hearing.
This is the final hearing on this ordinance. Anyone from the public wishing to comment on the ordinance, please raise your hand and we'll be called.
Seeing none, move to closed public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council's pleasure on the ordinance.
Move the ordinance on final.
Second.
The ordinance is moved on final reading by Council Vice President Kabiel, second by Councilwoman Maruka. Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman Mann 40.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman Sevastakis.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Council President Hill.
Yes.
Item nine. Item nine is an ordinance. An ordinance to the Township Council of the Township of Tom's River in the County of Ocean and State of New Jersey, authorizing the mayor to execute and the clerk to attest to a lease agreement with Ocean County College whereby the Township of Tom's River will lease block 705 lots 1, 1.01, and 1.02 to Ocean County College as part of the Barnacle Bay Partnership. This is the final and public hearing.
This is the final reading of this ordinance. Anyone from the public wishing to comment on it, please raise your hand and we'll be called.
Seeing none, move to closed public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council's pleasure on the ordinance.
Move the ordinance on final.
Second.
The ordinance is moved on final reading by Councilman Sevastakis, second by Councilman Mann 40. Councilman Sevastakis.
Yes.
Councilman Mann 40.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Council President Hill.
Yes.
Item 10. Item 10 is an ordinance. An ordinance to the Township Council of the Township of Tom's River in the County of Ocean and State of New Jersey, authorizing the mayor to execute and the clerk to attest to a lease agreement with Ocean County College whereby the Township of Tom's River will lease block 705 lots 1, 1.01, and 1.02 to Ocean County College as part of the Barnacle Bay Partnership. This is the final and public hearing.
This is the final reading of this ordinance. Anyone from the public wishing to comment on it, please raise your hand. Step forward.
Seeing none, move to closed public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council's pleasure on the ordinance.
Move the ordinance on final.
Second.
The ordinance is moved on final reading by Council Vice President Kabiel, and second by Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Councilman Mann 40.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman Sevastakis.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Council President Hill.
Yes.
Item nine. Item nine is an ordinance. An ordinance to the Township Council of the Township of Tom's River in the County of Ocean, New Jersey, providing a supplemental appropriation of $950,000 for various capital improvement and related expenses in and for the Township of Tom's River, and providing for the issuance of $902,500 in bonds or notes of the Township of Tom's River to finance the same. This is the final and public hearing, and I report that the supplemental debt statement required to proceed on this matter tonight has been received back in the office of the clerk from the Division of Local Government Services.
This is the final hearing on the, reading on this ordinance. Anyone wishing to comment, please raise your hand. Step forward.
Seeing none, move to closed public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council's pleasure on the ordinance.
Move the ordinance on first.
Final.
Final.
Second.
This ordinance is moved on final reading by Councilman Sevastakis, second by Councilman Mann 40. Councilman Sevastakis.
Yes.
Councilman Mann 40.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Council President Hill.
Yes.
Item 10. Item 10 is an ordinance. An ordinance to the Township of Tom's River in the County of Ocean, New Jersey, providing for various storm water improvements and other related expenses in and for the Township of Tom's River, and appropriating $1,900,000 therefore, and providing for the issuance of $1,900,000 in general improvement bonds or notes of the Township of Tom's River to finance the same. This is the final and public hearing, and I report that the supplemental debt statement as required to be en filed in the office of the clerk before this matter can be voted upon was received in the office of the clerk from the Division of Local Government Services.
This is the final hearing on this ordinance. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this or have any questions, please raise your hand.
Seeing none, move to closed public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council's pleasure.
Move the ordinance on final reading.
Second.
This ordinance is moved on final reading by Councilman Whitman, second by Councilman Sevastakis. Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Councilman Sevastakis.
Yes.
Councilman Mann 40.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Council President Hill.
Yes, and Paul, this was grant, am I correct?
Yes, sir, you are correct. It reads as a bond ordinance, but we will not be borrowing any money. This is actually a grant through the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust Fund Program.
Thank you.
Sir.
Item 11. Item 11 is an ordinance. An ordinance to the Township Council of the Township of Tom's River, Ocean County, New Jersey, authorizing the sale of affordable housing units acquired by the Township of Tom's River. This is the final and public hearing.
This is the final hearing on this ordinance. Anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand. Come forward.
Council President.
Yes.
Paul, when these units are sold, they are going to remain deed restricted as affordable housing units?
Yes, they will.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on the ordinance?
Seeing none, move the ordinance on final. Seeing none, move to closed public comment.
Close public comment. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council's pleasure on the ordinance.
Move the ordinance on final.
Second.
This ordinance is moved on final reading by Councilman Sevastakis, second by Councilman Mann 40. Councilman Sevastakis.
Yes, and I'd like to commend Jay Lynch and his staff, working diligently over the last few years, along with the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, to get these back on the rolls and get them out there and get some people into these houses. Thank you. Yes.
Councilman Mann 40.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Council President Hill.
Yes, and I'd like to second John's kudos to Jay and the people who, from the township, who renovated those units. Yes.
Item 12. Item 12 is a resolution. A resolution endorsing the relocation of the United States Army Rangers World War II Museum from Grand Camp Maisy to the Pointe du Hoc Visitor Center in Normandy, France.
Mark, why don't you explain what that is so everybody will understand that?
Our friend Bud Lamell, who downstairs, the Lamell Room, is named after of D-Day fame, who climbed the cliffs at Pointe du Hoc on the wall here in the Herschmann Meeting Room. He has numerous artifacts in this museum that's been in existence since 1990. The museum has come upon hard times, it may be closed, and there's an effort now, both in this country and in France, to relocate the museum from the town of Grand Comp, a small Normandy town, to the Pointe du Hoc Visitor Center, where Pointe du Hoc is, to be maintained by the American Battlefield Monuments Commission to keep Bud's artifacts and the other Ranger artifacts open for future generations.
I'd like to move the resolution.
Second.
Can I do that or can't do that?
Yes.
As president, can I do that?
Yes, sure.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to move it.
The resolution is moved by Councilman, Council President Hill, second by Council Vice President Kabiel. Council President Hill.
Yes, and I think, Mark, are you going to go over there this spring?
Next June.
Next June, during the ceremony for D-Day. Mark's been over a couple of times. He's close, personal friend to Bud's, and as we all know, Bud passed away during the past year. If you ever met the man, the most humble man I think I've ever met, with the accomplishments he had, I mean, a real combat veteran and a real hero, and one of the reasons that we enjoy the freedoms we do. So it's a great pleasure that I vote yes.
Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Councilman Mann 40.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes, and Mr. Mutter, thank you for bringing this to the council for our comments and for the resolution. Absolutely a great idea, and I'm proud that Bud Lamell saw fit and really he trusted you as our township historian, with a lot of his personal effects that are now displayed downstairs. And I know your personal affection and friendship with him, and I vote yes, and thank you for bringing this to us.
Councilman Sevastakis.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Item 13. Item 13 is an ordinance. An ordinance regarding Project Freedom, Block 164, Lot 4, for tax exemption and payments. First reading.
Move the ordinance on first.
Second.
The ordinance is moved on first reading by Councilwoman Maruka, second by Council Vice President Kabiel. Councilwoman Maruka.
Yes.
Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Councilman Mann 40.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Councilman Sevastakis.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Council President Hill.
Yes.
Item 14 is a resolution to transfer funds, and this requires a roll call vote.
Move the resolution.
Second.
The resolution is moved by Council Vice President Kabiel, second by Councilman Sevastakis. Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Councilman Sevastakis.
Yes.
Councilman Mann 40.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Council President Hill.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under item consent agenda will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired on any item, that item will be considered separately. A is a resolution refunding the overpayment of taxes for various properties. B is a resolution authorizing the person-to-person transfer of a plenary retail consumption liquor license, number 1507-33-004-004, from Bay 3 Limited Incorporated to J&amp;J Tom's River Liquor LLC, doing business as Boston's Restaurant and Sports Bar. C is a resolution authorizing a shared services agreement between the Township of Tom's River and the Office of the Ocean County Prosecutor for the Prosecutor's Program 2012. D was removed from the agenda. E is a resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Tom's River, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the Township of Tom's River to enter into a cooperative pricing agreement with the Middlesex Regional Cooperative Pricing System for the provision or performance of goods and services through April 22, 2014. F is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to a vendor with state contract, Flemington Buick Chevrolet Pontiac GMC LLC, for the purchase of one new 2012 GMC Sierra 2500 HD Regular Cab Four Wheel Drive Pickup Truck for the Department of Recreation Winding River Ice Skating Rink in the total maximum amount of $29,308. G and H, those items are removed from the agenda. I is a resolution opposing charges incurred under section three of the 2006 International Property Maintenance Code as they lean on real property and directing the tax collector to collect these costs and impose interest on unpaid costs in the same matters provided for the collection of real estate taxes in the Township of Tom's River, Ocean County, New Jersey. J is a resolution authorizing the award of negotiated contracts for snow plowing services for the 2011 12 winter season. K is a resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Tom's River, Ocean County, New Jersey, accepting renewal of the agreement between the Township of Tom's River and My between the Township of Tom's River and My Restaurant Group Incorporated for the Winding River Ice Skating Concession. L is a resolution authorizing the award of contract for the fiscal year 2010 paving and drainage project to P&amp;A Construction Incorporated as lowest bidders in the amount of $2,333,725. M is a resolution authorizing the award of contract to a vendor with state contract, Charles S. Winter Incorporated, Carmen Dodge Joint Venture, for the purchase of seven new Dodge Charger Police Pursuit Vehicles for the Department of Police in the total maximum amount of $168,662.83. And is a resolution amending a resolution adopted on September 27, 2011, by the Township Council, the Township of Tom's River, Ocean County, New Jersey, to identify the supplier to be awarded the contract for item number 109 as set forth in the bid specifications for janitorial supplies and pool chemicals. O is a resolution of the Township Council, the Township of Tom's River, Ocean County, New Jersey, authorizing a hold harmless and indemnification agreement between the Township of Tom's River and South Winds One Homeowners Association, limiting the township's liability for snow plow damage to South Winds One's roadways. P is a resolution of the Township Council, the Township of Tom's River, Ocean County, New Jersey, authorizing the online sale auction of surplus personal property for surf boats, no longer needed for public use, utilizing the services of propertyroom.com, Inc. And Q. Q is a resolution authorizing the township, the taxes assessor and tax collector to correct the assessed 2010 property values for various properties listed on attached Schedule A and issue refunds for those properties, and item R was removed from the agenda.
Council, any items that we need to vote separately or want to have discussed separately? Anyone? No? Anyone from the public?
Yes, sir.
K? Any other items? Can I have a motion on the other items on the consent agenda?
Move the remaining items.
Second.
Second.
The remaining items are moved by Council Vice President Kabiel, seconded by Councilman McGuckin. Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Councilman Manforty.
Yes.
Councilman Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman Sevastakis.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Council President Hill.
Yes. Now, sir, K?
Good evening. Uh, just had basically a quick question.
Okay, can you give your name and address to Mark?
Anthony Carbone. C-A-R-B-O-N-E. Nice Jewish name.
Address?
I just had a quick question in reference to the Winding River concession stand, as to why they have a five-year contract with a five-year option.
I'm going to defer to the Administrator, Paul.
I'd love to tell you, but I think that was done prior to me getting here, so Ken, you might want to, uh, I was not part of it.
Yes, it did proceed, both you and I, Paul. The agreement, which we looked over, was as you state, for a five-year period, and there was an option given to the concessionaire to renew for five years. The township needed to know if that option was going to be extended by the concessionaire. If not, we would have to go out and rebid the contract. The concessionaire did provide us with a statement in writing which was notarized, indicating his election to renew the five-year period.
Maybe I didn't ask the question properly. I was asking as to why the length of time of five years with a five-year, that's a total of 10 years before anybody can bid on something like that, you know, for a public, uh...
Yes.
I think that was when the, uh, the new rink was built, and someone had to go in there for the first time. They weren't sure of exactly their cost. We weren't sure of what the, you know, the monies were going to be taken by township or what the concessionaire was going to have to pay. So we thought for the first one, it seemed to be beneficial to get someone in and bid on it, because nobody was going to take a chance on a year or two or three-year lease, because it was a brand-new concession and a brand-new building. So we decided on the lease at that time, and there was a five-year option in there. This is the first time they've exercised, first time this option has been exercised.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Would the council consider, you know, reducing that on the next bid?
Be honest with you, sorry, I think everything's up for discussion at that point.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a motion on K?
So moved?
Second.
Item K is moved by Council Maruka, seconded by Council Vice President Kabiel. Council Maruka.
Yes.
Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Councilman Manforty.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Councilman Sevastakis.
Epstein.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Council President Hill.
Yes.
Next on the agenda are reports. There's one report to present for October 2011, the Permits and Expetions Department, $207,255.11.
Move the reports up to the record.
Second.
The reports are moved by Council Vice President Kabiel, seconded by Councilman Manforty. Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Councilman Manforty.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Councilman Sevastakis.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Council President Hill.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of bills.
Move the bills.
Second.
The bills are moved by Vice President Council Kabiel, seconded by Council Maruka. Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Council Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman Manforty.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Councilman Sevastakis.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Council President Hill.
Yes, with the following extensions. 11-05686, Tom's River Board of Education, Owen and Little Associates, 11-05460, and 11-05534, and St. Luke's Church and Tom's River Schools, 11-05595, and 11-05702. That's a large bill. The only two that I'm standing on is St. Luke's and Tom's River Schools, and Hartwood Associates. I don't have the number on that. I have to give that to you.
Hartwood?
Hartwood. H-A-T-U-R-T-W-O-O-D. Hartwood Consulting.
And Mr. Mutter, I'm sorry, I need to change my vote on that. It's yes to the bill list with the exception of 05595 and 05702, which I would have been staying on for Monsignor Donovan.
Next item on the agenda are comments by elected officials.
Mayor?
Yes, I have a couple of bits of good news, if I may. Two weeks ago, I attended the New Jersey League of Municipalities Convention in Atlantic City, and at the mayor's lunch, Tom's River received an award of 565 municipalities in Tom's River. Tom's River was the only municipality to receive this award entitled Innovation in Governance, and the title of it was for a project, Police Contract Concessions, to Avoid Layoffs Using a Better, More Effective Process with a Large Department. And I was very happy to accept that on behalf of the town, and for the same purpose, we received a parallel award from the National League of Cities. And those are very well received, and I'm delighted to be able to accept them on behalf of the township. Also, just to round out the week, we received a rating from Standard and Poor's, the bond rating agency, in connection with our general obligation bond sale that's upcoming, and our rating was increased from A+ to a double A, and with the notation, when they sent us the information about the upgrading, that a quote from their report says, "The rating committee was pleased with what the management has done in cutting expenses proactively and maintaining a strong financial performance in these tough economic times." So that's a tribute, and I think both of those awards are doing no small part to the gentleman who's sitting next to me, Paul Shives, our administrator. So those are the two things I have. I thought you'd appreciate hearing that.
Thank you, Mayor. Al?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to welcome tonight all of our cyber attendees out there in internet land. We went online last week with our meetings, and I had some time this week to check out the archive of the first meeting, and want to congratulate Joe and Elliot for a good job. You know, the meeting looked good. I think the, the public is going to enjoy that, get a good benefit, especially now with the winter season coming. And one announcement for the community not to forget, Friday is the tree lighting ceremony downtown Tom's River, right in the courtyard out here, starting at 6:00 PM with entertainment, tree lighting at 7:15, and Santa at 7:30.
Thank you, Al. George?
Thank you, Council President. I missed the last meeting. I was on vacation, and so I want, this is my first opportunity to thank the voters for electing me to a four-year term as a councilman, and I would also like to congratulate my running mates, Mayor Tom Kelleherd, Councilman John Sevastakis, and Councilman Mo Hill. And I'd also like to congratulate Councilman Greg McGuckin on his election to New Jersey Assembly. I know he's going to do a great job in the Assembly, but we're going to miss him on the council. So congratulations, Greg. In addition, I'd like to point out, item 10, when we spoke about the bond ordinance and said it's a grant, what it really is for is for the Adams Street Detention Basin and improvements to the detention basin to overall, for the health of Barnegat Bay. So the improvements that are going to be made to that detention basin will have a direct impact on Barnegat Bay. And as we read the newspapers and we saw the eutrophication and the nitrogen problems we're having in Barnegat Bay, this will be one of the things, a small measure, that'll help improve the water quality in Barnegat Bay over time. And I think it's important that, you know, we were able to receive a grant in an amount of 1.9 million to make those improvements. As you could see, with the number of detention basins out there, if it takes almost $2 million to repair one of them to get it up to snuff, you can imagine if you multiply that by the number of them around the county, how expensive it will be to improve the water quality. So we need to really look at the design upfront when we start to build these in the future, so that we don't have to go back and remediate them at a cost of $2 million for one, for one basin. But I think it's important to the overall health of the bay, and I think this is one of the ways that we can help improve the water quality in Barnegat Bay. That's all I have, Councilman.
Thank you, Greg.
Really, just the, the only thing I want to talk about were the, the two items that the mayor brought up, actually. First, it's certainly no, no small part that Paul Shies played in that. Also, see our chief of police here and our rank-and-file police officers. We don't get that award without the labor unions agreeing to the process that was utilized and for the agreements that were made. And really, it's a, a team effort and just a great all-around effort. And the bond rating is just tremendous news. I did not know that till just now. And I, the, name another town that you know of whose bond rating's been increased in 2011. I'm sure there are some, but there's not many. And in typical fashion, the mayor downplayed his own part of that and credited Mr. Shies and so forth. But let's face it, mayor's been in charge for four years, and for four years to have a bond agency make that kind of report in this financial climate is outstanding, and it's certainly no, no small part of, of Mayor Kelleherd. And Tom, just congratulations on that. I think that's really a, a true test of your four years, your first four years as mayor, and to see an increase in the bond rating, just absolutely great. It, it saves us money in the long term, and it really shows that the administration and how they've been running things in Town Hall just does a great job. So congratulations again, Tom. It's just terrific news. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Brian?
Thank you, Council President. We received notice earlier in the week for everybody who has filed a claim with FEMA. The proof, the original proof of lost deadline was November 23rd. They have extended it for a 90-day period, so if you have a claim that still needs to be satisfied, by all means, contact the rep and file the appropriate documentation and get in the mix to try to get all your money back for your loss. Just a quick reminder, all our council meetings for December start at 5:00 PM instead of 6:00 PM. During the month of October, a few days before I was leaving for New Orleans, I realized that our clerk happened to be flying to New Orleans the same day, earlier in the day, for the Rangers Convention that our clerk and Bud Lamell always attended. Once I got there, I happened to see what it was about, and it was a wonderful event to see the Army Rangers, all these years later, get together every year and reminisce about the war, and bring, still bring some of the old equipment to the hotel so they could display it for everybody. And ironically enough, even though I was there for a day and a half before I departed to go into another state, I did not bump into the clerk at all. But it was a wonderful event, and I can tell you that in Bud's memory, every one of those men and women that were there, and their wives, their daughters, that continue the tradition, love of their country and the love of their service is unbelievable, and will be always grateful for, for their service to our nation. Lastly, I got a email earlier in the month regarding a speed complaint on Chatham Drive. Paul, can you ask, I saw the chief walk in. I don't see him. Oh, I can't see him. Chief, can you look at Chatham Drive? We have a complaint about speed? Thank you, Ma'am.
Thank you, Brian. Maria?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to update a couple people on a, things that are going on here through our Recreation Department. This time of the year, we have our beach badges on sale at a discount, at the discounted price, which is $35, and you can purchase them at our Recreation Building, which is on Warren Point Road. This is right off of Merrimack. They make great Christmas gifts, and we've been doing it, uh, I believe this is our third year, and they will be sold until December 16th. You'll get a, a box with a certificate for the beach badge, and then someone can redeem it anytime after April 1st through Memorial Day. There also is another, Recreation Department is sponsoring a holiday event, and that's going to be here at Town Hall on December 16th. There'll be songs by, at 6:00 PM, Monsignor Donovan High School Choir will be here, magic show, hot chocolate cookies, and special guest appearances. And it's one of the great events we'll be putting on for the township. That, the tree lighting urge everyone to come by and join in. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Any Council President, well, Maria took my two, uh...
(laughing)
It's okay. I just wanted to congratulate Mayor Kelleherd and my running mates, Council President Mo Hill, and George Whitman, and also Greg McGuckin being elected to the Assembly. It was a great campaign. We worked well together, and I'm sure for the residents of Tom's River, we'll be there for you for the next four years, and look forward to working for all the residents of Tom's River. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Tonight, we passed an ordinance for Project Freedom. That's ADA-compliant housing, and that project is moving along, not as fast as we'd like, but it's a very, I think, a very worthwhile endeavor, for ADA-compliant housing. It's a need that was identified a couple of years ago. Jay Lynch has worked very hard on that, and I want to thank him for moving, moving that along. Jay, thanks a lot. Also, at the last meeting, Dennis Galanti asked if we could get a collection drop for Toys for Tots, so I pulled some strings. Mayor, I used your pull with the Marine Corps. Called Colonel Al Smith, who's a retired Marine from Six Motor T up in Red Bank. I spoke to him this afternoon. They're going to have a barrel downstairs as of tomorrow. He said Thursday at the latest. If it's not down there, he said, give him a call back. He talked to the INI staff up in Red Bank. It's a Marine Corps Reserve function, and I, I use the mayor's clout to get that taken care of. So we had a Rear Admiral retired and a Lieutenant Colonel in the Marine Corps, and we'd like to get a, a barrel down there. Now, I'd encourage, you know, there's a lot of traffic through this building, so I'd encourage people. We got, they're going to pick up probably the third week in December. So at our next meeting, I would encourage everybody who comes to the meeting, please bring a toy and drop it off. I would like to see us have a, an overflowing barrel for them to pick up, and we can do this as a yearly event. It's a very worthwhile charity. The Marine Reserve has a very, Marine Corps itself has a very tight bond with the, the American public, and this is a, an endeavor that the Marine Corps Reserve does every year in a very worthwhile charity. One other thing going on this weekend, we have the tree lighting. Also, on the, on Friday, there's a Tom's River Municipal Alliance, and Tom's River Elks are, are doing the shaking for the shelter, which is an intermediate school dance. The phone number, 732-341-1000, extension 8490. It's to benefit the Tom's River Animal Shelter. It's free admission, free pizza, Friday at 7:00 to 9:00. It's going to be at the Department of Youth Services, 1505 North Bay, next to Bailey Park. Permission slips are required because it's a, it's a school event at the door. They're accepting donations of blankets, towels, pet food, gift cards for the animal shelter. So I mentioned that. Also, just today, I got a printout from Mark Mutter that there's a bill going through the Senate and Assembly for $140 million for transitional aid. 61.4 million, which is going to Camden, 22 to Trenton, 21 to Patterson, and eight other towns will split the, the balance of that. Unfortunately, Tom's River is not one of those towns. As Maria mentioned, and I think it was, I'm sorry, it was Brian mentioned, the meetings in December will be at 5:00 PM. That's an hour earlier. So I, I caution everybody to remember, we're going to be starting an hour earlier. So if you come in at 6:00 o'clock, the meeting will be about half over. So that's all I have, and we can open it up for public comment now. I'm in the back. Nels?
Nels Luthman, 834 New Jersey Avenue. I just have some questions. Obviously, there's going to be a special bond issue on December 15th for the fire district.
That's a fire district.
Yeah. Um, they're asking us to authorize about a million dollars for the purchase of property, but they don't specify what property they're buying.
Because there is, there is a legal requirement that they can't enter into any contracts until such time that they have the approval from the voter. The actual property in question right now, there's two. One of them is downtown in Tom's River, but the one that they're actively looking at is Hoover and Hadley.
Okay. And there's no total cost to the project? This is just the acquisition of the property, and I have no idea what the whole project, because they're now going to have to rebuild the new firehouse?
Their, their intent is to move administration's office there and eventually construct a firehouse, and they don't, we won't know the cost until after the architects and engineers design that.
When's the next Fire Commission meeting? Because it's not on their website. They don't advertise their meetings.
The first Wednesday in December.
First Wednesday in December. Because, you know, out of the blue, this letter is, I don't know if you saw it that you got.
I saw it.
Is rather general in what they're asking us to vote a million dollars for. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any, anyone else? Yes?
My name is Jerry Arena.
Okay, just, when you hit them...
My name is Jerry Arena, 54 First Avenue.
Sir, could you spell your last name, please?
A-R-E-N-A.
Thank you.
I have a problem in reference to all the rain. I have a neighbor where the leader is near my property, and I'm getting a runoff, and I have a crawl space. I've cleaned it once, and he proceeds that there's nothing since, got certificate, uh, let's see, 10 years, and this only occurs when an extreme heavy rainfall, seven years, there's no problem whatsoever. And I've talked to the building department. I said, well, he has a CO, could only have been stopped when it was originally built. Then I talked to the town engineer, and he also said that it can't do anything. Why can't the town either pass an ordinance or put it in the building code in reference to leaders either leading into a dry well or to the street away from other properties? My property adjoins this individual. I have pictures showing the base... have pictures showing the basement, I mean, the crawl space in such a condition, then I had it cleaned and now I see the stuffs reoccurring. The mold and the stuff accumulate on this in the block, concrete blocks in that corner where, where his leader comes down. And when it rains, you have approximately maybe 1,000 square feet, a roof area that's concentrated in that area. And if it rains two, three inches, there's equivalent 3,000 gallons being concentrated and it leaches into my property. And somewhere along the line, someone in the town should address this because I'm on the beach area, all the lots are small, 4,000, 5,000 square foot. And why should I turn around and have to live with my neighbor's water problem? And he refuses to believe that the water's coming into my crawl space.
I could try to answer the first two questions. To put it in the, to put it in the code is not a township function. That is a national code committee who develops the International Building Code. New Jersey adopts the New Jersey edition of that code through the state legislature.
Some towns have this code right in it.
All towns use the same code. All towns.
What I'm saying is they do have a reference to the leaders going into the road or drywall.
The sec, the code now on the DEP requirements will require all roof runoff and everything else for new construction to run into a discharge into the ground for discharge back to earth. The answer to your, your second question is even if the code was to change today for future, there is no, usually there's no retrofit provisions to make anybody that constructed a building prior to the date of that adoption to comply with the new code because if that was the case, we would constantly be updating the buildings every year. Lastly, the ordinance, and I'll yield to Mr. Fitzsimmons, I, and I don't know that we can't help you. There may be an avenue to help you. But the answer to your question is I don't think the state law for the building code gives you a provision to make the code more stringent than the state requirements. I think it's clear that we're prohibited from making it more stringent.
I'm not saying to make it more stringent. Well, I can show you pictures of what's occurring on the heavy rainfall. This, like I say, it doesn't happen every year. This past year, we're having an awful lot of rain and I'm getting paid.
I understand what you're saying. And there may be a way to-
And I think there should be something, like I say, it is in some town codes and this town doesn't have it.
Mr. Arena, there probably is something, a way to fix it from an engineering standpoint that would be easier than trying to clean your crawl space. Could, did you speak to anyone about putting like, for example, some kind of barrier, either railroad tie, wall, a couple of railroad ties?
Under the gravel.
So they would, you'd be able to, you'd be able to, you know, direct the water away from your crawl space.
Well, this goes under the gravel. His, his elevation is higher than mine because they put fill in. He ended up having a higher elevation 10 years ago because of, they brought in fill.
Yeah.
Prior to that, he was lower than me. I can't do anything like that because again, it would turn around, the water travels up.
Yeah, but I think you can direct it so that it would travel over the, over the ground. I don't know, you know, I don't exactly what your situation is.
Once it goes below grade, I can't.
Yeah, well, you could put, you could put some kind of plastic down or whatever, but there's a way to, I think you have to look at, you know, other ways because we can't change the code to help you here.
Well, I'm-
You know what I'm saying? You have to come up-
I got a construction background.
Yeah, okay.
There is nothing I could do on my side. There's a little $50 item on his side, maybe $100, tops, redirecting that thing. He won't even put it on, on his driveway. Just put an elbow and bring the water onto, it would be in the road. You know, I talked to someone. I was trying to get some relief somewhere in the town. You know, I'm-
I mean, there's not much we can do to solve it. I mean, if the neighbor would fix it, it'd be probably the simplest solution. There's not a lot we can do with it.
I guess what you're saying is that the neighbor, you haven't been able to-
I got a letter I wrote to him in, I think it was '08 or something like that. Now with all this rainfall, I had the place cleaned. I have pictures of it being cleaned and now I see the signs of the mold and the water staining on that wall.
Would he agree to have you channel it on your property, put it in a pipe and run it out to the street? I mean, you know, if he would allow you to connect it to a pipe on your property and run it out to the street, that might be a solution.
I have to-
I understand, but I mean, you want to fix the problem.
It can't be done.
Well, no, no. If you run the-
All he has to do is put a tw-
Okay. I can show you what I'm talking about after, I don't want to take up the time in the meeting, but I'll show you what I'm referring to.
I'll go and show you the pictures.
Okay.
I'm not so sure that if this is water that's leading right into your crawl space and it's standing water in there, it may, it may even be an Ocean County Water Health issue too.
This is runoff off of a leader. This is not standing water.
But it's in your crawl space and it's-
Well, what happens is, it's not, it's saturating the blocks, the concrete blocks. And the concrete blocks have cavities and what happens is the moisture comes in.
Right.
And then you see the stain on the concrete blocks.
He's got a redirect.
And it's painted and you can visually see in some of the pictures I have.
Yeah, I, I, we, you know, we understand your problem, but I, as, as George said, I think you really need to have a discussion with your neighbor and see if he can't work this out. I mean, it's just-
I wrote a letter.
I know.
And three, four years lapsed and that thing still stays there.
I would suggest maybe have, talk to him face to face. I mean, a letter, it's a little impersonal, maybe talk to him.
I think during the summertime.
Yeah, well, just-
That's an insult, but he turns around and knows my concern.
Yeah.
And he refuses to do it.
It's not much, I don't think there's much that the township can do to help you. This is a, this is something that you're involved with your neighbor. You may need to seek some advice from possibly a legal advisor and find out what can be done to protect your property rights. Certainly understand your situation, but it's not something that the township has any function in, I don't believe. That's, that's what I'm hearing here, so.
On the leaders, the town doesn't have a function on some level. It's leaking.
But if it's, as Brian said, if this construction was 10 years old, you can't go back and, and demand a retrofit. It's something that you and your neighbor are going to have to work out. I don't think the township can, has a, has a fight in this issue.
The other suggestion I have for you is since it's getting into one corner of the crawl space, you could put a, basically a sump pit in there and pump it out if you wanted to do that.
Doesn't accumulate water.
Well, it's going to pump-
It's just the blocks, the blocks get-
All right.
There's no water accumulation in that crawl space in there.
Okay.
It's just the blocks get saturated.
I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to help.
I appreciate, you know, I appreciate your situation, but I think you need, you need to work it out with your neighbor. It's an individual situation and I don't think the township can, can really assist you in. And I, I understand your situation, but I'd advise you to, to try to meet with your neighbors.
Create an ordinance for this purpose.
I don't know that we can, like I say, but you're not going to be able to correct the situation now because you can't make it retroactive. So, all right, thank you. Anyone else? Carol?
Carol Benson. How many Fire Districts do we have in Tom River?
Two.
Only two?
Yes, ma'am.
And is the cost of those two Fire Districts incorporated so that everybody pays the same rate per hundred?
No. You pay less in District One than residents of District Two. And there, there's a lot of reasons for that, but primarily it's because of the insurance, it's called the ISO rating, the Insurance Services Organization rating. And it has to do with not particularly Fire Department response, but as fire hydrants and things like that. And there are many areas in District Two that don't have fire hydrants. So because the insurance rating is a little lower, you actually pay more assessment in District Two.
And within those two districts, how many firehouses are in District One versus District Two?
Currently?
Yes.
There's six firehouses in District One and three in District Two.
Three in District Two. So nine altogether?
Nine.
Okay. And the time of that Fire Commissioners Meeting was?
Seven.
Seven and the location?
I believe off the top of my head, it's West Water Street, but I will let you know that.
Water Street?
Yeah, because they move the meetings around from fire station to fire station because they don't have a meeting hall, so they move them around. So I think it, I believe it is at West Water Street, right at downtown.
All right. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yes?
Real quick, Mr. Cabell, what time is that Fire Commissioners Meeting?
Seven.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ken?
Ken Langdon, Ortley Beach. The scourge of the Barrier Islands flooding. There's not much that we're actually going to do about flooding over in the Barrier Islands. I kind of talked to different people and I figured that we could assume the position of New Orleans and have levees put around the entire Barrier Islands.
And we know how that turned out.
Yes, we do. However, we do have flooding in various places that can become a nuisance. And one of the problems out on the Barrier Islands, the British communities have different ways of handling this. And it is handled fairly well in the neighboring communities, where Lavalette, the park seaside. I think one of the problems that we may have, and the area in particular, is flooding is all over the island, but there is one sore spot, shall we say. And again, I'm going back, it sounds like I'm repeating myself. I'm, I'm back to Washington and Eisenhower. The Washington from Fielder down to Arnold by the AMP is notoriously, you get a high tide, you get a rainstorm of any type. That is a very sore spot for high level and flooding purposes. Out on the island, most of the other communities handle things a little differently than we do in the sense that if there is flooding, the Public Works Department of the various communities can take care of it almost immediately. They are cognizant of when you're going to have this type of problem and be ahead of the game, if you will, having barriers in place so that as soon as the tide comes in or the rain comes in or whatever the reason, the barriers are there. We are faced with a situation which understandably, until barriers can be put up out on Ortley, we have to go through police permission or, you know, get approval from the police. And that's, I can understand why that happens. However, I think out on the island there, we had a particular situation where I guess what I'm asking is somehow if we can kind of cut down on the bureaucratic intermix so that we don't have delays. When you have this flooding, particularly in this Washington area, Washington Street area, is we have a lot of people who are, would like to see how big a rooster tail they can do, you know, if they can do 40 or 50 miles an hour to do. And this has a very detrimental effect upon the neighboring houses. You've got waves rushing up under these houses and this has been a sore spot for some time. I guess the bottom line here is I'd like to see some sort of operation procedure put into play so that there is not the delay that we have experienced in the past. So that when we do have high tides, when we do have rain, that barriers can be put out there as quickly as possible so we do not run into this particular problem. I would hope that the Public Works could have barriers, I'm sure they have them, at the MUA property there, which is only essentially a block and a half away. But the most important thing is to develop an operational system whereby they can be placed in the proper position and we can cut down on the speeding, which has a very detrimental effect on the falls.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And anyone else?
Say now move to executive session.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances to discuss matters requiring confidentiality and/or of a privileged nature. Whereas the council is of the opinion that said circumstances now exist, now therefore be resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Tom River as follows. One, the Township Council will now conduct a private executive session. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed and directed upon is as follows. Matters of personnel, attorney-client privilege, contract negotiations. Three, the following specific items to be discussed and directed upon are as follows. Executive session minutes, October 25 and November 15, 2011. Personnel, Project Freedom Financial Agreement and Contract Negotiations, Shared Services Agreement, Fire District Number One. It is anticipated that deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public by determination of the council that the public interest will be no longer served by such confidentiality. The motion was made by Council Vice President Kabill, seconded by Council Maruka. All members voting favorably to enter into an executive session at 7:11 PM.
Do you like that?
Why do you store it that?
That was my swamp, I can't remember.
How was it going? This is the second meeting, right?
Nice meeting.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
Do you like that?
Yeah.
Mark, do you want to do the minutes separately?
Yes. We could do this.
Waiting for her birthday.
Why do you take her? I'll.
Are we gonna go back on the record? Now, we're back on the record at seven forty-five PM. And all members of.
Council members present.
All members of council are present. Three items to present. The first is the approval of executive session minutes of October twenty-five, two thousand and eleven.
Move the minutes?
Second.
The minutes are moved by Council Maruka, seconded by Councilman Sevastakas. Council Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman Sevastakas. Councilman Manforty.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Kabiel.
Abstain, I was not present.
Councilman, Council President Hill.
Yes.
All right, so the minutes, those minutes are approved by six to one vote with one abstention. Next item to present is the approval of executive session minutes, November fifteen, two thousand and eleven.
Move the minutes?
Second.
These minutes are moved by Council Maruka, seconded by Councilman Manforty. Council Maruka.
Yes.
Councilman Manforty.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Abstain, I was not at the meeting.
Councilman McGuckin.
I abstain, I was not at the meeting. I was not in executive session that evening.
Council Vice President Kabiel.
Yes.
Councilman Sevastakas.
Abstain, I denied attendance.
And Council President Hill.
Yes.
And these minutes are approved by four to zero vote with three abstentions. And then the last item to present is a resolution. It's a resolution authorizing a shared services agreement with Fire District Number One for records management services.
Move the resolution.
Second.
This resolution is moved by Councilman Manforty, seconded by Councilman Whitman. Councilman Manforty.
Yes.
Councilman Whitman.
Yes.
Councilman McGuckin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Kabiel.
I abstain, I have conflict.
Councilwoman Maruka.